Evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town and Row Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm Michael Riley, the chairman. It's September the 4th, 2025, and it's 7:02 PM. If you'll please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
The Constitution of the United States of America, the liberty of our land, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll call the roll starting on my right.
Thomas Margolino, alternate.
Dominic Panichia, alternate.
Ryan Condon, commissioner.
Robert Westland, commissioner.
Nicole Lupo, alternate commissioner.
Catherine Gallagher, planning zoning administrator.
Anyone online? Do we see who's there? No. Okay. Commissioner Condon, do we have to seat alternates?
Yeah, are these guys not coming?
Bruno's not.
He's not coming. I haven't heard from Commissioner's.
Oh, yeah. So Dominic Panichia would be up next, followed by Nicole. So Dominic will be seated, and then if he doesn't show up, Nicole is also seated.
Who's technically seated first?
Dominic Panichia.
Okay.
Raise Dominic.
Panichia.
Okay, so we're on the record. We're going to have Commissioner Panichia seated for Bruno, for Commissioner Miami.
Yes.
And we're going to have Lupo seated for Commissioner Ambrosi.
Yes, I mean, he doesn't show up. Okay, thank you. We have time for general public participation. If anyone here would like to address the commission on issues that are not on the agenda or not likely to be on the agenda in the near future, this would be the time to do so. If you'd like to address the commission, please raise your hand. Anyone online would like to address the commission on issues not on the agenda?
If you would please use your raised hand function.
Please use your raised hand function. I don't see any that will move along.
They can't get on Zoom, and they're not, they can't get on.
We have lots of people on.
So you do?
What's their name?
Mark Lamont and Peggy Lamont.
It says Mark's on here. It does not say Peggy, but Mark Lamont's NUI iPhone. But Mark's Lamont's name is in it.
All right, let's go ahead with the first public hearing, SCP 2025-04. This is 169 Enterprise Drive. This hearing is not going to be heard tonight. We're going to continue it. However, since it is a noticed public hearing, if there's anybody that would like to address the commission from the public on this application, please raise your hand. This is 169 Enterprise Drive. Anyone like to address the commission on this application? Seeing none, then we'll move on to the next.
Just one note. So the applicant is still planning on resubmitting items. Unfortunately, they just weren't able to get the whole packet together. So you will receiving additional information and updated drawings on this. I do believe you have one of their letters and their lighting plan. They will be submitting drawings to accompany that because they didn't have the full package. They wanted to present that all at one time. They've also been requested for a letter of extension, which they will submit in order to get us to the next meeting.
Thank you, Kathleen. The next public hearing is a new hearing. This is a zone change of 2025-01, 1603 Monroe Turnpike. And Commissioner Condon, you have the notice.
Yep. In accordance with CGS 8-70, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, September 4th, at 7:00 PM, or soon thereafter via hybrid Zoom meeting and in-person attendees located at Monroe Town Hall, ZCARA 2025-01, File 1031. Zoning map amendment and regulation amendment petition application to establish a special development district, SDD 8, within the Main Street Design District overlay located at 1603 Monroe Turnpike. Bruce C. Mondo and Bruce Mondo Jr., owner applicant. Notice was published in the Connecticut Post twice, once on August 21st and again on August 28th.
Thank you, Commissioner Condon. Kathleen, you want to read the exhibits to the record?
Exhibit number one is the application and plan sets. Exhibit number two is the adjacent municipality referrals sent by the town of Monroe. Exhibit number three is the planning and zoning administrative report from myself dated August 19th, 2025. Exhibit number four is a response to the planning and zoning administrator comments by the architects, by the applicant's engineer, Don Smith, dated 8/26/2025. Exhibit number five is the certified mail receipts for the public hearing. Exhibit number six is the response from MetroCog. Exhibit number seven is the response from WestCog. Exhibit number eight is a letter from the neighbor Willie Wiley dated 9/3/25. And I will go through some of the contents of the regional responses later in tonight's hearing.
Okay, and for the applicant to have.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. For the record, Town of Louis Smith, junior professional engineer with an office at 56 Lincoln Serpents Seymour, representing the property owners Bruce Mondo and Bruce Mondo Jr. Bruce Mondo Jr. is here with me tonight as well as Tracy Lewis, the land surveyor for the project. You want to share?
I can share.
So what I have up on the screen is the existing site survey with a parcel. Roosevelt Drive is at the top of the screen. Monroe Turnpike is to the right. Property is outlined in red. Water course of the Halfway River is on the upper left, and unnamed, unnamed water course that goes through the property. And a little bit light, but the two green lines that are, green highlights, those are the two outside edges of the ever-source easement. So we are here tonight to present a zoning text amendment to create a special development district, SDD number eight, at 1603 Monroe Turnpike, which is within the Main Street Design District of the underlying B2 zone. And the SDD identifies the district and establishes regulations and guidelines that will certainly govern the future development and use of the property. The SDD will provide a development opportunity that will fulfill a need in both the community and the area for the existing businesses currently located on the site with Monroe roots dating back to 1941. I've been working with the Mondas on this project since March of 2023, when we had discussions, initial discussions with Rick Schultz until his departure in September of 23. We had initial contact with Kathleen soon after she started in spring of '24. And then again, this past spring, assembling the SDD text and application for the commission. The applicant has taken a number of preparatory steps that were needed in order to bring us to this point, including the discontinuation of the public use of a portion of Old Web Road by the time of Monroe. That was back in 2021. Acquisition of a small parcel of land from the adjacent landowner to resolve an appropriate approachment. We had applied for and received a letter of map amendment from FEMA in January of this year that corrected discrepancies in the flood map behind the parcel. That's a flood map and associated with Halfway River. We merged the two properties known as 1603 and 1650, Monroe Turnpike, to form the single parcel that you see on the screen. And we were issued a permit by EverSource Energy for the proposed site development and use that's before you tonight. Proposed SDD number eight will allow for the development of this parcel in a manner consistent with the stated goals of the Monroe Plan of Conservation and Development. The intent of this SDD is to allow existing Monroe-based businesses to increase economic opportunities available to the town of Monroe and elsewhere. It would facilitate updating and improvement of the existing business on one of the main corridors in town. The proposed amendment is consistent with the following portions of the POCD. Chapter two, Economic Development. The economic development goal reads, "Foster a vibrant economy that provides residents and visitors with access to goods, services, and employment opportunities while diversifying the town's property tax base." Strategy four of this goal states, "Review the town's zoning regulations and revise as needed to be more supportive of emerging businesses, business practices, business types, and land uses." Also in chapter five, entitled Transportation and Infrastructure, there is a map of Monroe with MS4 permit area and stormwater outfalls. Property at 1603 Monroe Turnpike is located within this area. With the development of this property, strategy seven, "Maintain and improve stormwater infrastructure to comply with MS4 permit requirements," will be implemented. Grant plans strategies are identified by their priority theme in chapter eight, titled Implementation Summary. One of the four themes is Grow the Economic Base. Monroe's economy is changing, and the town should work towards encouraging and supporting a diverse economy that draws upon Monroe's strengths, including access to state highways, available commercial and industrial land, and a strong business environment. Regulations of the proposed SDD number eight have been drafted to reflect the criteria of the B2 district by promoting compatible economic development and enhancing the visual character of the corridor. The development of this parcel with the addition of outside storage and heavy equipment parking will greatly serve both the economic and commercial needs of the community. This is the language of the SDD, which you have in your package. I'm going to walk through this, at least part of it anyways. But these are the statements of standards, statements of usage standards for SDD number eight. Section one, Special Development District is established in accordance with the provisions of Article 8 of the zoning regulations. Section two, Regulations. Within the SDD, all land buildings and all structures shall be used, all buildings and all structures shall be faltered, constructed, enlarged, extended, or moved, except in conformance with these requirements. These requirements may be amended from time to time with the express approval of the commission or its duly authorized representatives. Section three, Requirements. Set best specifically modified herein, all provisions and standards of the Town and Monroe Zoning Regulations applicable to the B2 zoning districts shall apply in this SDD. Permanent uses. The principal use is an excavation contractor's establishment. The accessory uses include buildings or structures customarily incidental and accessory to commercial uses that's permitted herein or allow included outdoor storage, I'm sorry, outdoor storage of excavating and other heavy equipment, work materials, and various manufactured construction materials, including precast concrete, PVC, and concrete pipe, et cetera, that are related to the principal use and on-site parking. This chart here provides a comparison of the standards of the B2 zone. The standards set forth in SDD number eight, this is the third column. The last column is the proposed site plan, the proposed site development plan that's been generated.
Can you enlarge that? Thank you.
So minimum lot area, B2 district is currently 1.0. The SDD number eight, the parcel has 4.767 acres. Minimum square that fits on the parcel for B2 is 125 by 125. We're staying with that in the SDD. The minimum frontage for the B2 is 125 feet. Maintain that in the SDD number eight. However, our frontage is 700, almost 708 feet between Route 34 and Monroe Turnpike. The minimum front yard setback, the B2 zone currently is 50 feet. We are proposing a 15-foot front yard setback as part of SDD number eight. And the actual setback is 16 feet to the corner of proposed retaining walls. Minimum side yard of the B2 is 20 feet. We maintain that as 20. And our existing side yard setback to the existing building is 35.3. Minimum rear yard, same 20 feet in the B2, maintain that in the SDD. And the rear yard setback to one of the buildings is 59.8 feet. Minimum yard adjacent to the residential district, the B2 is 30. SDD number eight is 30, and we have maintained that with our proposed site development. Same with maximum height, 35 feet in the B2. 35 feet in the SDD number eight. We're not proposing any new building, so we're still less than 35 feet. Maximum building coverage in the B2, 25%. SDD number eight is 25%, however, proposed is only 6%. Minimum floor is not really applicable. Building spacing is not applicable either. But we are more than 25 feet between the two buildings. Landstate buffer at the front yard, B2 district is 20 feet. We are proposing a 0-foot front yard landscape buffer. And we'll bring up the plan later, you will see part of Y. Proposed buffer is zero in the front yard. Landscape buffer to the residential zone boundary, B2 district is 20 feet. We have proposed 15 feet as the SDD. Our actual is 15 feet to residential landscape buffer to a residential zone. Outside storage, the B2 district allows 20% of lot area. We maintain that percentage in the SDD. And proposed outdoor storage that we got on the plan is 18%. And then the off-street parking. B2, proposed use does not exist in the code. The closest to the landscape contract are the four spaces per thousand square feet of office plus one space for fuel and power. For the SDD, we have used that same formula to generate the parking. And our parking plan shows a total of 33 spaces. And lastly, internal driveways for parking and loading to residential district is 30 feet. We had staff had made a comment on that of number five. Number five states that per Town and Monroe's auto regulations, parking areas, internal driveways show less than 20 feet from the street line, right-of-way line, front property line, over the 30 feet of the residential district. Please confirm that the storage areas in the area of the building will not be used for vehicle storage or parking. If the intent is to use that for any sort of vehicle storage or parking, please add another line to the bold standards. In our response to staff comments, we confirm that those rear storage areas will not be used for vehicle storage or parking. The development plan, the reference here is the reference to the schematic site development plan for SDD number eight throughout this part of the package. Section seven, Modification Amendment. The SDD is consistent with all the elements set forth above. A treaty of plan documents exists may be modified upon adoption of subsequent alteration and modification to prove by laws of the commission. By that said, modification is not material fact. Basic elements of the SDD may be approved. And the material alterations changing the basic elements shall be made on by the planning and zoning commission document. Please notice public hearing will be changed. And the legal description basically is the plan entitled the existing plan of the survey, which was the initial plan that they had upon the screen at the beginning of the presentation. Again, here is the same plan that we saw in the beginning. I'll add a little bit of color added to it. Again, Roosevelt Drive is 34. That's the upper right corner of the page. Monroe Turnpike, Route 111, is along the right-hand side. The Halfway River is here along the northern edge of the property. Halfway River is also the town line between Monroe and Newtown. So we have joiners there of Newtown. These two rose-colored squares here are these two existing buildings that are on the site. Existing paving that's on the site, existing landscaping, grass in the front yard here. This dark black coming down through the middle is Old Web Road that the public use has been abandoned. But the Wiley's have their driveway in order to access their property. The Wiley's have use to that discontinued roads. They still have rights to that road, although the use has been discontinued. Our plan for Web Road is to widen that out to a 24-foot wide roadway and come down into a large flattened area in the northern portion of the parcel. As I had indicated initially, the property is encumbered with the EverSource Energy Transmission Easement, which is this line here, this broad line here, and everything in between down to here. It continues over on this part of the page over here. So this is the 1.3 acres of the property that is encumbered by EverSource against building construction. The two buildings on the property date back to 1987 and 1989. They were permitted to be a special exception at that time. They currently house a construction company, and they're septic and drained. Site has a single curb cut over here on Route 111. Spoke of the unnamed stream that runs through the property that comes onto the property from the south underneath the railroad. There's pipe, discharge as the pipe goes off the property and then comes back onto the property, joins the Halfway River. I'm told that that unnamed stream was highly polluted in the late 80s and early 90s due to illicit discharges from businesses that were located upstream at the time. The stream emitted foul odors that affected nearby workers. Portions of the stream that have unusual appearance until this day. The site is served by a prior well and existing septic system. Property currently operates as a commercial excavation contracting business, which is free existing use on the site. Proposed design includes the construction of a large retaining wall, approximately 350 feet long and from 0 to 19 feet high. That retaining wall is located here to the east of the unnamed tributary. It's located here to the south of Halfway River and then comes partially up along the frontage that we have on Roosevelt Drive. Then this property currently slopes from Monroe Turnpike down to Halfway River. So there's a lot of elevation difference. Like constructing that retaining wall, we're then allowed to create basically a level platform within the site. And that large level platform, A, has been designed for a WB50 tractor trailer truck, which is a vehicle that the Mondas use quite often when they're moving heavy equipment. And then we have a number of parking spaces for heavier equipment, triaxial trucks. Those are not standard parking space strapping. Those are 12 feet wide by 30 feet long for parking spaces so that they can accommodate the larger vehicles. There will be some material storage bins. Let's say between the drive, between the flat area and Old Web Road. There's some material storage bins for different types of materials. And then around the outside will have some storage of some pipe, plastic pipe, concrete, precast concrete will be filled in around the outside edges. An underground stormwater management facility will be installed to address stormwater discharges and according to the MS4 requirements, with an outlet to the lower reaches of the unnamed stream. Again, that stormwater management would be located within the developed area. And then it would outlet to the unnamed tributary just upstream of Halfway River. Additional landscaping and new LED dark sky compliant lighting will be proposed. Upon approval of SDD number eight, detailed site development plans, drainage calculations, planking plans, mitigation, restoration plans, we will be prepared to address the outstanding zoning weapon violation on the parcel. And applications will be made in the weapon of the plan itself for approval. On behalf of the Mondas, we look forward to working with the commissions on resolving the outstanding issues with this property. And we look ahead to finalize development. In short, that's the presentation and answer any questions.
We'll have some commissioners' questions first, if you want to start on my right.
You show a lot of activity, construction, right through the easement. Do you plan on, how do you plan to leave access to that easement?
We have, again, I had mentioned earlier, the area of the easement, we have applied to EverSource with our proposed development plan, with this plan. And they have examined that and issued us a permit to proceed with this once we gain the town peoples.
I understand that. But during your construction, especially where the parking is, if they need to go through that easement, how would you give them access?
Well, they would be able to go through it as they always have been. Basically, coming down Old Web Road. The first set of towers are right up here on the east of the edge of the property, right up on top of this slope. This is a high point. It slopes down to Route 111. And then from those towers, it slopes down to Halfway River. So they have access into those towers. The next set of towers is down here below our development. And they've always used Old Web Road to come in and access the towers, the first set of towers, and then go down Old Web Road to get to the second set of towers that are right down here. So we would have no, you don't see any conflict with EverSource needing to get in. They come in and do some vegetation management as needed. And so we work with that as we do.
Thank you. Dominic, you can ask questions too.
Right. I did the sidewalk recently. Everything seemed pretty good. No questions for me.
All right, I will.
The pre-existing violations, have they been rectified on the property at this point?
No, they have not. This is the first step of getting those violations addressed. We've been working with staff. I've been working with staff since 2023 to get us to this point. I mean, the confidence, the plan, that's what we want to do. Coming to the confidence plan that sort of what we want to do. The violations will be addressed with detailed plans that we put forward.
So there's been a hangup on our end as far as?
I can add a little history to that. So they came in again spring of 2024, when we had very brand-new staff, including myself, and had stated that they had wanted to do improvements on the project. When we did our initial research, we had realized that they had both pretty extensive wetland violations and zoning violations at that time. At that pre-application meeting, we also laid out all of the steps, which were very time-consuming on their part in order to rectify a couple of things, including the letter of map change with NEMA, which is just a long process to work with them, the merging of the lots and some other items for that area. I can't remember if you were at the meeting, but they did come to subcommittee and ask if subcommittee would be okay with them combining the rectification of the violations with the proposal of the special exception permit. And at that time, subcommittee did direct them that that would be okay. So that is what gave them the direction to kind of do this holistically. What they did not really go through is exactly what those violations are in the extent of what the site looks like right now. So where they're proposing the parking area on the upper half of the sheet, on the north half of that sheet, not at that elevation, but that entire area is disturbed and being used for material storage, which is both wetland and a zoning violation because of the Boy's Halfway River. They have to comply with wetlands for 150 feet, not 100 feet. So that area is already disturbed. That area is already being used for storage and that area is already a violation. And then the storage area in the back of the building on the bottom left-hand corner, again, they are already using for storage. And that's already a violation, you know, located on the property. So to ask them to remediate it, to take all their storage material off, to plant everything again, to bring it to grass, and then have them come in and want to disturb everything again, just felt like not the best use of the timeline. We'd rather have them rectify it. And although I know it's been about a year since they've came and talked to us, the things that they did have to do related to all the steps that they, I believe thoroughly outlined, they have been making progress on it, in my opinion, in a timely manner. And they have been keeping us abreast of how they've been making that progress through it. So I do feel like that they have been making typical progress on this application where they weren't just like hanging out for the last year doing nothing and now they're coming to us. So that's the current status of, yeah, the violations on the site. They do have, when we're talking about the history, they do have special exception permits from 1986 and 1988. 86 is for the front building, 88 is for the back building. As part of that, they are permitted to operate, as they are operating now, as an excavation contractor, and use those buildings for their office spaces, their storage and the parking associated with that. What's triggering them coming in for a special development district is the fact that what they're asking to do, in my opinion, is not a legal intensification of the use. It actually would be an illegal expansion because in our current B2 regulations, we don't allow excavation contractors in our business districts. We only allow them in our industrial districts. So they don't meet the definition of a contractor's trade establishment due to that excavation factor associated with what they're doing. So what they're coming in, they're doing is they're legalizing their use to the extent of what they are trying to do. But right now, from a use perspective, with the relationship to those two buildings and the parking, they are in compliance with what they are allowed to do for the property.
Thank you. So I read the letter from the Wiley family here also, and they seem to be, you know, I looked at some of their concerns and they seem to be a little bit concerned about the access on that road as they will have access as far as snow removal and clearing the vegetation. So what type of plan do you guys have in place to keep that roadway clear? In the event of, you know, vegetation's pretty obvious, that's going to go, you know, be cleared along the way. But for a snow removal perspective, will that be done day of or what is the plan for that?
Mondo's have the equipment to handle the snow removal. It's the Old Web Road, which is now the driveway. We recognize the Wiley's have the rights to use that. All right, so initially during construction, it might be a little bit rough because we are taking that roadway and widening it out, changing the drainage a little bit, adding some drainage. So we're going to be improving drastically in Old Web Road and the majority of it that's on our property. And then it will revert back to the existing gravel drive that's there down the bottom. But, you know, Mondo's have maintained that. EverSource is down in there. EverSource does the better work of worse. EverSource does a lot of maintenance work in terms of upsizing drainage culverts, earth disturbances, et cetera. They also are in there doing the vegetation control. We've got notice, or the Mondo's get notice that EverSource is going to be doing vegetation control. If you really look at it, as you turn onto 111 from Route 34 on both sides of the hill, there is a lot of ground right there under the wire. So EverSource does all from EverSource. So, you know, EverSource is, I want to say a silent partner in this because they are responsible for some of the activity. We believe they're responsible for some of the violations that are inside it, that exist on the property. But we're, you know, we work with them and with the town to resolve them.
Is this the Wiley's only access to their property? It's their only access? Okay.
And just so you know, they are on Zoom tonight
Yeah.
for public comment if you want to ask them questions as well.
So yeah, just the timing is a concern of mine, just making sure that that will be taken care of in a timely fashion, you know, so they're able to gain access in and out. I don't see that there'd be a change from what you're doing now, but that's what we're here for.
This northern area is going to become an integral part of the Mondo's business operations. So it's not really going to be able to get you around that part a lot unless we follow a good road. Be maintained. That's what they do.
That's all I have.
I also did a site walker a little while ago and you've answered all my questions, so I'm all set.
The driveway will remain open, passable throughout construction? The driveway will remain passable throughout construction?
Yes.
Okay. That subterranean stream that you mentioned, pipe stream, has that given you any problems over the years?
Yeah, flooding.
Last August.
I was getting to that.
Okay. Last August, there was a lot of water that came through there. Eventually it got blocked up on the upstream side of the railroad and worked its way out to Monroe Turnpike. Down Monroe Turnpike, some of it came down, you know, Old Web Road and down to our property. Majority of it, I believe, went all the way down to Route 34, Turnpike, and came down that way. Route 34, you know, to our front property, around here, there's about 20 to 25 feet vertical elevation. Quite a bit, but there is a 40, 48-inch culvert there and a 36-inch culvert that handles that stream.
Can you show me that? Can you show me that on the map?
They are stacked on top of each other, the 48-inch pipe and the 36-inch pipe.
Can you zoom in on that? Can you zoom in on that? I can't really see it from here.
Sure.
So they reconstructed the portion on Stevenson, I believe.
Wow.
I believe they reconstructed the portion on Stevenson at that height, correct?
Yeah, it's a word of the stream. They joined, yeah, they've run property.
Has that caused any problem?
Are you talking about recently?
Last year, well, I think they just finished recently.
Yeah.
The flood.
It technically, it should be in a, like, they, it flooded out and they're bringing it back from the flood. They didn't put it back exactly how it was before, but actually they put it back in a way that we think is actually more beneficial with the way that they've done some of the stormwater basins and whatnot in that general area. I'm looking at my wetland enforcement officer who happens to be in the crowds.
Yes.
Yeah, to make sure that that statement is upstream of it, which is stabilized. So the hope would be is that anything actually that happened upstream wouldn't have a negative effect to this area. Hopefully it actually has a positive effect.
But there was no damage to this piping? That had to be okay, okay. And it's functioning now as far as you know. Do you have a detail on the retaining wall that we could see? Could you just zoom into it?
So it would be a reinforced modular black wall, 20 feet or so height, in the embedment. These are recon modular blocks made here, precast, laid in a row. But these are modular blocks, they're 16 inches high, 48 inches long, 24 inches deep. And then there are geogrids that extend back into the slope that provide the strength and stability for that wall. So it's, I mean, it's accepted method of construction, accepted method of retaining the wall. There's what we call the large blocks, the jumbo blocks, about four feet wide, 16 inches high. So it's something that you would see typically like the highway, overpass, bridge abutments.
Can you just show the distance from the wall to the river?
So from the base of the wall to the river, we are about 31 feet. This line here is our property line. Here's our 30-foot yard setback. So we're just beyond that 30-foot setback to the residential property. With the retaining wall. This double line here represents this double line, the outermost line represents the base of the retaining wall.
And then you've got, property line is halfway in the Halfway River? The center of the river, that property line?
Sorry?
This property line is the center line of the river?
It's the center line of the river, yes.
Thank you. Do you have anything else?
Just that I want to bring the exhibits to your attention. We did receive a letter from William Wiley. He is the neighbor to the rear that uses the access road. I know at subcommittee, when they originally came in, there was a lot of questions related to his access, his use, screening to his property. I do believe he is on Zoom tonight. If anybody does have any questions from him, for him, he will be able to speak to it. Also want to bring your attention, because this is right next to the Newtown line. We had to notify both MetroCog and West Cog. West Cog's comment letter back was, "Thank you for submitting the attached referral to West Cog. While regional staff cannot recommend the degree of development within the riparian area, given the existing use of the lot, the proposed project represents a significant improvement in stormwater management. In general, the benefit of the 100-foot vegetated riparian buffer in reducing waterway contamination are significant and this buffer should be maintained whenever possible to meet the zoning requirements of Public Act 2129." Just as a quick review of what that is, that was adopted in the last year. And basically what that did was to expand zoning's authority to protect the water supply of watershed lands, the state's historic tribal, cultural and environmental resources. So while it does not set like a statewide buffer distance, it does expand zoning's authority to explicitly include the protection of environmental and riparian resources. Again, as mentioned before, a lot of this area is already disturbed, unpermitted as part of a violation. But as part of this, they are not clear-cutting the area that's there. Unfortunately, that damage that would have occurred is already done. They are doing a substantial improvement related to stormwater right now. You know, a lot of that material is just running in. I think one of the challenges of this project, that we're not going to really know how they plan to execute it until we get to, until we get to the site development plan, is the riparian area that they're left with is both pretty steep and slightly decreased. So the question is, is how do you get the most bang for your buck, you know, in such a small area? How do you plan that to be even the most environmentally beneficial that you can? It's hard to do mature trees on such a, you know, significant slope. So the assumption is they're hiring a landscape architect or someone of the sort, or environmentalists, to be able to go in and really kind of speak to that. And how they will be able to really properly utilize that. There's a ton of invasive species on site. I have been on the site, I'm assuming wetlands. And we will be encouraging wetlands to include that as part of their mitigation plan to rectify, you know, their items is to do a pretty heavy invasive species removal and replanting that with native plants, which is above and beyond what they would normally require for most properties. But I think because of the limited area that they have, based on the proposed plans, if this commission would choose to accept it as it is, means that, again, they're trying to do the most intense mitigation in, you know, a small area. Wetlands does need to submit a referral letter to this commission, which you will not have tonight. So we cannot vote on this tonight. They did come in front of wetlands and at no fault of their own, unfortunately, needs to come back to wetlands at the next meeting. Based on our preliminary conversations with the inland wetland commission, their biggest concern is just making sure that their citation is closely tied to this and gets rectified as part of this project, which again, was always the intent that the only way this gets through is that they rectify all of their violations to the satisfaction of both of the commissions in order to move forward.
Okay, thank you.
So just to follow up with what Catherine said. The wetlands commission did vote to make a favorable referral, four to one. But because of the problem with Zoom.
Again, no fault of the
Wetlands did make a favorable referral at four to one. We'll be voting back to them for the next meeting. I just brought up here the site survey that was up at the beginning of the page, or the beginning of the meeting. And you can see here, there's a disturbance limit that the survey was located. And that disturbance limit, it starts here within the easement line, but then it does extend to the north out of the easement line a bit, going up through. The invasive species that Catherine mentioned primarily are within this area between the disturbance limit that we didn't get to, say, below this line in this area, both sides of this unnamed brook. Here's the two new spanfolds that we put in a few years back. So this area right down in here is heavy on the invasions. We didn't get down in there because of the Mondo's. But I think a lot of that disturbance was for it. EverSource were in the riparian transmission hours. So we're going to look to work with down EverSource and the Mondo's to address that. We did have a biologist on site to look at it. It's pretty heavy invasions there, so.
So once you're completed with the project, you'll be maintaining that area?
EverSource maintains it.
Well, they're not going to be maintaining the field where you're parking the trucks.
No, but they, EverSource maintains vegetation within easement. No, but they maintain, ever source maintains vegetation within easement so that it doesn't go up too thick. And so.
This area, be willing to maintain it? Once the project's completed? Would you be willing to maintain that area once the project is completed? Right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and let's go to the public. So if there's any members of the public that would like to comment on this application, please raise your hand. I will choose you. Come forward, give your name and address in the microphone. Please address the commission, not the applicant. Please keep your comments to a reasonable length of time, and please do not repeat your comments. Do you have a sign up there, Kathleen?
I did not set it up, so we
Glad with place for you to sign in also. All right, so I got right over here on the right.
Michelle Saltis, South 237 Cottage Street. I do have a quick question that might address some of my concerns is, I apologize, I'm stupid, I guess I don't know all this, is whether or not this gets approved strictly for zoning or for this particular land?
This is just for zoning?
This is just the zoning. Okay. Let's write it down.
Yeah, clarify that a little more.
So my, one of my concerns, and I know you said something about it, I have to go back to IWC. I know IWC did, he's correct, approved, yes, okay, we're fine with the zoning change, but not the plan itself. My concern is how is the wall 30 feet from the river? And everything I've heard is we have to be 100 to 150 feet from water. So like I just, I was curious.
No, that's an excellent question and clarification. As part of a special development district, it tied to this property, and the conceptual plan also gets tied to this property. So they are in essence approving this plan with similar concept as what it's written. So if you do have comments related to exactly what you just said, the wall in relationship to the Boys' Halfway River, that is applicable at this stage because there's opportunities if the commission would choose to have them move some of that, because yes, it is tied in concept. Now, they don't have a mitigation plan. We don't make them do a lighting plan. We don't do those specifics. But if this were to get approved, in essence, something similar to what's there could get approved. And the 150 feet, again, that's the inland wetland buffer associated with anything with, and that needs to be permitted. It doesn't mean it can't occur. It just means it needs to have a permit.
I just don't want to waste time asking something that really was not relevant.
No, that's applicable.
I do have a concern. When he was showing the retaining wall planned drawing, it should have eight inches of asphalt millings on top. Everything from IWC I've seen because of contaminants and asphalt millings, they are not acceptable to use near water sources. I'd like Andrew or somebody else in IWC to give approval or something for that, if that's something to be done. I do question the wall being so close to that river. It was stated in one of your records, Kathleen, in one of the documents for tonight's meeting, that there are trout known to be there, even though, yes, we've heard the water is contaminated from prior businesses or whatever. While I understand the damage is done with clear cutting and whatnot, I can't stand that too many times I come to meetings and every freaking business that comes in does the, we're going to ask for forgiveness later. Meanwhile, townspeople who want infractions are jumping at every IWC meeting, having to pay through the nose to replant things, replant trees, replant shrews, put in natives. I don't see the same being done to businesses. They are held at a lesser standard, though they have deeper pockets. That is really, really sad to me. I don't like that. I do have issue on these proposed regulations of purposes they noted in this documentation. The STD is going to provide additional development opportunity for the businesses to fill the need for community and existing business on site. And it's such significance that it warrants modification. Such significance as this, it's 2016. We've had IWC and P&amp;Z infractions, or whatever the proper wording is, that have not been remediated. I understand at one point it was, oh, the pandemic happened. Well, that was four years later. What happened the first four years? Then it was, well, we went 2023 and then somebody left. Well, now we're trying in 2024. What the heck happened in the last eight years? So we just continue operating business. They get to make money. We get to spend my tax dollars paying for people to follow up with things and try and do things that are going to work for what you're doing now. All it does is it's the second business I've seen in a couple of months at various meetings where it's, you do whatever the age you want, and then you're going to ask for an exception later because it makes you more money. They don't care. It does damage. You want to talk about the well-being of the town and being physically responsible? This is not what this type of thing does. And it really bothers me that I feel like they put everybody over a barrel to go, well, let's just work with what's there now. If I were a resident that did this, you'd make me replant trees. And it bothers me they're not held to the same standards. I have issue with the fact that the regulations, that one of their documents reads, "Within the special development district, no land buildings or other structures shall be used. No other buildings or other structures shall be altered, constructed, enlarged, extended, or moved except in conformance with these requirements." They haven't complied with prior regulations since 2016. They got an exception in 17. We still have. When are they going to comply? Nobody's going to oversee this, let's be honest. The town doesn't seem to have the time to follow through on this. It bothers me again that we just ask for exceptions. We do what we want. It's all good. There's been way too many violations. I really have a shift still in that river. I'm curious also, vehicle work on these? Where are these vehicles going to be maintained? Is it going to be along these rivers with the trout and salamander and the wildlife? Because at 30 feet from that wall, I'm not comfortable with tractor trailers and all these vehicles coming in and very handy people who have multiple businesses are not going to be working on vehicles themselves. Is there going to be a shop for these vehicles so that if there's spillage, it is not going to be spilled near the wetlands or by wet water since I live there? I have issue with that as well. Plan strategies, when he was reading off earlier, one of the gentlemen, with this conformity with plan of conservation and development. Plan strategies. One of the four themes is, quote, "Gro economic base." Implementation summary, okay, Monroe's, economy is changing. The town should work towards encouraging and supporting a diverse economy that draws on Monroe's strengths, including access to state highways, available commercial and industrial land, and strong business environment. We're definitely doing that, but I'd like to see us do something for the residents and start holding these businesses accountable, and we're going to let them continue to grow. I don't feel as a resident, we've really done that. The development in this parcel with the addition of outside storage and heavy equipment part area greatly serve both the economic and commercial needs of Monroe. Okay, well, when we worry about what also has to do with the economics of my townspeople not having to spend money chasing people, that would be lovely. And when somebody actually gives a crud about the fact that the neighbors are having properties misused and we don't care, we still just continue operating. No cease and desist, no nothing. It's very frustrating. So I'm really hoping some of these things get taken into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, yes, come right down. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Paula Jell. I live at 290 Cottage Street. If you go south on Route 111, south from Mondo and take a left on Cottage Street, find the first house on the right. And my question is about dark sky lighting. I brought some pictures with me this evening. This is dark skylight as as a lamppost, and that's downtown Derby by Bridge Street. This is a dark sky lighting fixture. This is a dark sky lighting fixture. And what makes these dark sky lighting fixtures dark sky? They point down towards the ground. They do not project light out or up. The reason why we have dark sky lighting regulations is not just to protect the human beings from annoyance in the neighborhood, but for animals, birds. Birds need dark sky to migrate. This is a photograph out of my guest room, a second floor window, taken August 25th, 2025, at 12:02 a.m. And this is from the Stevenson lumberyard area, which now has new businesses in it. Glad to see new businesses in there. I have filed two zoning complaints about these lights. These are lights pointing out and up. This is what they have. It's pointed out. The first year, I couldn't get the zoning department to enforce other than a hood around the light. But my whole house was still lit up, and even the trees behind my house were lit up, even to the tops of the trees. What kind of assurances are Mondo, what is the design of their dark sky lighting, so it's actually dark sky lighting? And not a floodlight? Thank you very much, and I wish Mondo success.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else here tonight that would like to comment on this application? Is there anyone online that would like to comment before we take seconds? Anyone online that would like to comment on this application?
I'm seeing one hand up, but I can't. Oh, it's, yes, Mark Lamont.
Mark Lamont, okay, go ahead. Just name and address for the record, and I think you have to unmute him.
I did. I mean, I allow him to unmute himself. He has to accept my request.
Okay, there we are. Am I unmuted?
You're good.
Okay, thank you. Again, I'm remote and my wireless connection is not very good, so I apologize if the vocal quality or the voice quality isn't good. I hope you can hear me. So I always approach these from what I'll call a high level, these issues, what I call a high level.
We just need your address.
Oh, I'm sorry, 51 Downs Road. So close in the neighborhood. And my wife Peggy is there as well. So I just have five sort of statement questions that I'd like to put in here at what I call a high level. Mondo's initial claim was that this proposed development of their property benefits the town and creates revenue and jobs for the town and a lot of people. And to me, what it sounds like to me they're proposing is an expanded storage yard. So I ask, how does that benefit the town and create a lot of jobs for the town and revenue for the town and the people that live there? Three, so those are the sort of points one and two. Point number three, I don't understand, with all the violations that they've been accused of, and I guess committed, how are they allowed to be considered for these improvements, and how can they be trusted? Four, all the lighting they're proposing, has there been a lighting study done? How will that lighting impact? I don't know because I couldn't hear everything very well. But how will that lighting impact those of us who live up on the hill and those of us who live nearby, including somebody like Paula who lives across the street? And I say this sort of tongue-in-cheek because it's coming up next, but how will that impact the proposed development of the 15364, 1564 subdivision across the street? And five, what does the conceptual drawing look like from a street level and from a perspective of curb appeal? And, you know, does this development, does it denude the property in the same way that the Stevenson lumberyard is, and I'm not blaming them necessarily, because, but during the torrent of last year, you take all this in that Mondo location, it's downstream. Stevenson lumber was wiped out during the flooding event that we had last year. Mondo was only downstream from it. How does the denuding of that property impact everything? So that's, those are my comments, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments. Does anyone else online like to comment on this application? If so, please raise your hands. You see anybody, Kathleen?
Yeah. No, but I am going to say, I do see William Wiley on.
Does he have his hand raised?
No.
Okay. And then we have someone here.
I do feel like you can figure out how to raise his hand if he wants to talk.
Hi, I'm John Kimble, 262 West Port Road in Easton. Family has property at the former Stevenson lumber facility. I think it's admirable that the commission is working with Mondo family to try and rectify the violations. A lot of businesses like Stevenson lumber came in in the 70s, 80s, and were zoned into this business to zone and didn't quite fit. But the town said, oh, this is how you do it, and this is what we need to do, and this is how it works. And yeah, you can be a consulting company here, you can be a lumberyard here, or whatever. And we didn't really fit. And what we found out after changing the regulations for Stevenson to make the regulations fit the use, that did generate a lot of revenue for the town. We went from paying the facility on site, paid $70,000 in taxes, now pays over $300,000 in property taxes. Every one of those truck parking spaces is going to have a $100,000 piece of equipment sitting in it. Those pay huge amounts of personal property tax. So the fact that they can legitimize a business, when you build a retaining wall like that, you do it from the uphill side away from the stream. There with the construction practice of doing it, so you don't have to go closer to the stream to build it. Build it from the inside and bring it up. And then that gives you a finite barrier where, like Kathleen had mentioned, great improvements in stormwater quality and stormwater management, where they're basically taking stuff that right now is just flowing into the river, and they're capturing it and treating it and doing the right thing. There's a family that didn't just show up last year and start working here. They've been working in the community for a lot of years and giving people in the community jobs. And I think it's, you know, it's commendable. There's a very wide state-owned buffer, as you guys have visited the site. I really appreciate that you go to the site because you can see there's a wide buffer between the actual use and the road. You can barely see in that spot. It's very well protected and has high tension wires and transmission lines. To be able to figure out a use that's going to generate economic revenue with those constraints, the transmission wires, I think, again, is also admirable. So we commend what they're doing. We appreciate, and they've been good neighbors. After the flood, we went down, checked out their drainage. The second pipe didn't even get water in it during those floodwaters. And the flooding that happened wasn't because of our drainage or the Ryerson Company's drainage. It was the state's drainage that was not maintained, the town's drainage that was not maintained. Their walls blocked up, the water came over the road and washed up the hillside. Their haywalls blocked up, the water came over the road and washed up the hillside. So it wasn't the failure of our drainage systems, it was basically the failure of maintenance on the town and the state level. So I don't think anybody downstream should be held accountable for, you know, kind of the maintenance failures of the town and the state. So those are my two cents, and I appreciate your taking the time to listen to me.
Thank you, Mr. Kimball. And we have a final word? Yes.
Salta Sankey, 37th and Cather Street. So sorry, I promised I'd get quick inflection and things, no disrespect, Kathleen. What gets me with West Coast that I forgot, because Kathleen did read it. What bothers me is just reading it is reading it. It sounds like, yeah, okay, they don't have issue with it. That's not totally true. It does read, while regional staff cannot recommend this degree of development within the repair area, given the existing use of the law, the proposed project represents significant improvements in stormwater management. Those things have to be remediated for what was done regardless. So I still have issue that this organization we went to within the state for their yes or no blessing or whatever, did say, we cannot recommend this the way it's drawn. I would like that to hold maybe a little more weight than just the average resident like myself who's not educated for this. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else here tonight that would like to comment?
Willie Wiley did.
We have someone in house. Come on up. Please state your name and address.
Samantha Beer at 5 Sunrise Terrace. I just want to reiterate Paula's point about the dark sky lighting. It's not necessarily related directly to this proposal, but I actually submitted a kind of like a notice that it's really bright, really bright over there. Even when you're pulling out onto 111, it's like the lights are in your face. I've been to Paula's house, super bright over there. And, you know, we have a lot of owls in our neighborhood, and we have bats and things like that that need the dark sky lighting, which I believe is required. So, yeah, just wanted to see if somebody could follow up with going out there to check it out at night. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I believe we have someone online.
Mr. Wiley, you should be able to unmute yourself to speak.
Mr. Wiley, can you unmute yourself?
Is that blocking Mr. Wiley from coming on?
No. I mean, I can.
There it is. Okay, we can see you, Mr. Wiley. Can't hear you.
All right, the only other option I have, because I, what I have to do is I have to hit the allow to talk. It gives them a prompt, and then they have to accept the allow to talk. I can try to promote him to a panelist, just temporarily. Again, he would still have to accept that.
Okay, Mr. Wiley?
And then he should be able to unmute himself a little more easily. I think he's unmuted.
You unmute yourself, Mr. Wiley? We can't hear.
I think he is unmuted.
Is our computer muted?
It's what?
Oh, can you hear me now?
Okay.
Ah ha.
And yes, our computer should be muted.
Name is William Wiley, 1609 Monroe Turnpike. Sorry, we lost the connection there earlier on when you had, there were some comments about the shared, about the access over the discontinued road. We just wanted to say that we're concerned that the, any work there we done would hinder access to our property during construction, especially for fire or other emergency use. My wife has some comments too. This is Geraldine Wiley. Hold on.
I, I was listening to what he was saying, and it's basically that we do have a legal agreement with him to do maintenance on that road, for him to do the maintenance. So we want to make sure that that's still going to be happening, that we don't have to go back to court to redo anything.
That's it. Okay, that's, that was end or.
That's the question.
So that was the question. So I guess that would be the end of our comments, Jerry. Okay, thank you for, we're done for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, any other questions, comments, online or in person? If not, we'll go back to the applicant if you'd like to address any of these concerns.
So I just, just to follow up, we don't have a lighting plan yet, right? But I indicated that will be, there will be a lighting plan with our final design, and then it will be dark sky compliant fixtures. So as part of that lighting plan, we'll see what those fixtures look like, and we'll see the lighting levels on the property. So we will address that. Mr. Mondo indicated that he will maintain access for the Wiley's during construction and after construction. The fact that we're enlarging that road and widening that road should make it easier to maintain and easier to access for them, so that that should not be an issue. And then, you know, benefits to the town and benefits of project will create jobs. Mondo's have 20 to 25 employees. Some are laborers, some are young, just out of high school, some are experienced operators with many years of experience in the trade, but they are an employer in the town. Mr. Kimball was right. If we fill up that parking lot with $200,000 pieces of equipment, there's 20 of them there, that's a tax benefit to the town of Monroe. Those vehicles are registered here in Monroe, so there is tax benefits of having this business grow and expand and have a presence here. There is benefits to the town monetarily and to the residents through employees, future employees. Again, how will we be trusted? We're still here, we're here now, we're making a plan to try and correct this. Since 2023, when I was involved, we've been trying to do that, and it was one thing after the other, well, let's get this in place first, let's get this in place first, let's get this in place first, so that we can have a plan, that we can do this. Wasn't particularly good to bring in a plan, and EverSource doesn't approve it yet. So we've done a number of steps, we've gotten here, we're here at the table. We heard these same concerns from Wetlands the other night. Mondo's don't want to leave town, they want to stay here, they want to be a good business owner in town, they want to be a good property owner, and we're going to make good on what's been done there, and we're going to fix it, we want to be a good neighbor in town. So we, we ask for your support, we ask for approval of the zone text amendment, and let's come back with the final design plans, and then go from there.
Any questions from the commissioners?
Just one point, you know, on the, on the lighting plan, if you could bring in some renderings of what it'll look like to us, besides just the models and the makes of the other lights, if you could, if it's possible to do some type of rendering so we can see what, how it's going to actually look, that'd be great.
And just to clarify, you don't mean for the STD, but if they, if it were to get approved and they go back for the STD?
I do have a question on the vehicle maintenance. Maintenance done in the buildings now or where is maintenance done on the vehicles? Yeah. They'll stay in the buildings as it is?
We could put that as a condition.
Do you have fuel storage on site?
Oh, right.
Offground tank?
That's all the way up in the front corner here, right? Front, yeah. It's a offground convault fuel tank. Is it 500? Sure, yeah.
Can you give us a detail on that when you come back? Can you give us a detail on that when you come back? Any other questions?
The building that the maintenance is done in, does it have floor drains? Are there floor drains in the, in the building where the vehicle maintenance is done?
Not where maintenance is actually done, but there are floor drains in the building.
In the building, okay.
There's a lot of water, something. Floor drain comes out, yeah.
Yeah, if you could detail that as well when you return. All right, any other questions here? No? No, no, all right, then we'll continue this hearing.
It's going to be continued to the September 18th meeting.
September 18th. Thank you very much. 11:00 p.m. That concludes the public hearings for tonight. You have site development subdivision presentation coming up next. One, 1536 and 1564 Monroe Turnpike cluster subdivision application and special exemption permit application. This is a determination of acceptance for a public hearing. This is not a public hearing, there will be no public comment for the rest of the evening.
And while the applicant is getting set up, if I could just do a quick little history of where we were and where we are. So 1536, 1564 Monroe Turnpike came in front of this commission for a cluster subdivision and special exception permit earlier this year. It was denied, and I would like to read. All right, it looks like the album's going to read the denial letter into the record. For the reason for the denial, I had to do, and I'll generally summarize, there was a lot of concern by the residents in this commission related to the potential effect of the subdivision on the wells in the surrounding area. The applicant came to staff and asked if they were able to resubmit the application for consideration. Staff, myself, spoke to our town attorney, who made the determination that the planning and zoning commission could hear the application again if it was a different application, so substantially different. So not necessarily substantially different in the way that the layout is of the actual site, but substantially different as in the content of the material, especially content that related to the reasons for the previous denial. So the narrow question for tonight, because this is not a public hearing, is, is the applicant's submission, which you all have copies of, but you'll notice, does not have an actual application number associated with it, because we have not accepted it yet, that's what this commission is making the determination on? Is this submission substantially different to the point where it warrants a new public hearing, a new application, and that this commission is willing to rehear it again? You accepting this application does not mean that you will vote in favor of it or against it, it just means it's different enough that you would like to hear the new information, and you would be looking at the application as a whole as something that's different. So I gently warn you to make sure an applicant, the town's attorney, the applicant's attorney and I have spoken earlier today, that their presentation is related to the content of the new information, but not the merits of that. So they did additional analysis on A, B, and C, but not that they did analysis on A, B, and C, and that resulted in, you know, X, Y, and Z, and therefore we believe that, you know, it's not them trying to prove the approval or denial, they're not substantiating that, they're just trying to prove that it's substantially different. So if you were to vote yes, that you think it's a different application, you hear it tonight, then we start the public hearing process, they'll come back in a month for a full public hearing, they'll do a full application, the community will have a chance to speak. Because they knew this is on the agenda, I have been getting a lot of information from them. All that information, though, is new information they're trying to present to you related to threatened endangered species they feel like might be on site, or the analysis of all the different wells. And again, they're all talking about, you know, specific content, which is that's not the level of the review that we're getting into tonight. Any questions for me about the ask of the vote at the end of this before we get started? Okay?
We were looking for a significant amount of new information to allow us to hear a new application on the project, and we'll take a vote at the end of the presentation, all of us. Go ahead.
Well, that was actually a pretty good summary, so I don't know if I can add on that, but Chris Russo with Russo Rizio LLC, offices at Ted Sasko Hill Road, Fairfield, here on behalf of the applicant, Chance Landau, LLC. As you say, good to see everybody, everybody happy on this. There was a denial on May 1st, it was actually a motion to, it was a motion to approve that, and that was put up there, and it was two voted in favor, three in opposition. And, you know, the neighbors had expressed this concern, and it was, it was put in the, in the denial letter, and I'll just read, I won't reach into the whole paragraph because it's kind of a long paragraph, but, and this was the only finding that was listed. It said, "The commission finds that the applicant has not adequately demonstrated that the proposed subdivision will have no adverse impact on existing private wells servicing neighboring properties." And then it goes on and says, "The applicant did not provide sufficient hydrogeologic evidence or data to confirm that the new wells servicing the proposed subdivision would not negatively affect these existing water sources." So that's what we've gone out and, and we've retained somebody, Karen Stefanis, who's here with me tonight, to look at that and, and address that concern. I know, you know, again, it's a concern of the neighbors, it was a concern of this commission, Commissioner Benji, I think I remember you specifically saying to me, is there something you can provide to kind of address the concerns of the neighbors with regards to their wells? So we were able to, you know, retain Mr. Stefanis, and she can come up, and it is tough because she can't get into the details of her report, what her findings. So what I've asked her to do is just explain the methodology so you can understand what data she collected to make her findings, and not get into really what the findings were, but what, essentially what that data would tell her about, you know, things like the aquifer in the wells. So it is, you know, it's not a full presentation, but it's a limited presentation where she can kind of share that, share that with you, so.
Can you clarify one thing?
Sure.
Before, my understanding is, when we talk about like the physical material that has changed, the hydroal, like assessment report has been added, but nothing has actually fundamentally changed from the layout of the drill.
Right, it's still a new one, a clustered subdivision.
But there hasn't been any substantial change to the layout.
Not from the last one, remember, like through that whole process, there's a lot of revisions. So it's that latest revised plan, and then, and then, and then Mr. Stefanis.
Right. Thank you.
My name is Karen Stefanis. I'm a president of WSP, we're an engineering firm in Shelton at Six Research Drive. I am a hydrogeologist. I got my degree, my undergraduate degree from Franklin Washington College, my MS for hydrogeology at UConn, and I have a license to volunteer in the state of Connecticut, I'm a certified professional geologist, and I have over 35 years of experience. I was retained by the applicant. I was retained by the applicant to take a look at this proposed subdivision, to do a hydrogeologic assessment, and look at the conditions of the, the underlying geology and potential impacts to nearby water supplies. For me to do that, I conducted a site visit to give understanding of the training, the land, and then a windshield tour of neighboring properties, um, I reviewed published documents including geologic maps, uh, reports, uh, reviewed well logs, information that's online, provided by MetriCon. I talked to the local health department for specific well logs, and Connecticut Department of Consumer Protection, if you don't know, also has a database that has well logs, that go back to about nineteen seventy. In addition, I looked at precipitation data, what's average and drought conditions for this region, and all of this information is what I used in order to do the assessment of, uh, what we call a water budget analysis. So the idea of a water budget analysis is, what is the take for the proposed subdivision? And what is their demand? And can the site sustain that? Is there enough precipitation to, directly to the site to provide that amount of water that the proposal would be taking? And, um, there's a lot of reports on how much recharge during the average and drought conditions, that you can estimate what's gonna go back into the system, and based on that information, I was able to determine that there's sufficient water directly to the site to sustain the, uh, the, uh, proposed subdivision. I, I can say minimal to no effect for nearby wells, the neighboring wells. I looked at a lot of well records, we identified thirty-seven well records, and it shows that the underlying bedrock geology, because that's what the well would be installed in, and, just to be clear, each house is going to have its own individual well, so it's not a community well, so it's not, uh, you know, uh, a sole source, everybody has their own well, um, and they're all on one and a half acre lots, so there's good separation. Um, and based on the ge- underlying geology, we were able to look at statistically, from the well records that we reviewed, that, you know, about half of them were able to produce or yield over five gallons a minute, which is more than sufficient, and the other half was less than, um, five gallons a minute, was only a couple that were below one gallon a minute. This, without getting into too much detail, this satisfies what we would consider, uh, you know, a good formation.
Excuse me, somebody online can't hear you, can you speak up, please? Thank you.
If you should. So, uh, based on all this information, concluded that, um, this proposed, the information being the recharge from the precipitation, the consumption that would be required by the eight homes, and just the overall geology, that, uh, this project wouldn't have any impact, or minimal impact to neighboring properties.
Can we ask questions? Be open to questions? All right, that's, thought of the commissioners on my left, Commissioner Lupo.
Um, how far out, you said thirty-seven wells, how far out from the site did, does that entail?
We looked, um, at a distance of a thousand feet from the property boundary. When we do, so I do a lot of water permits for the state of Connecticut for municipal water companies, and when they do water withdrawals, high, high yielding wells in bedrock, we typically look about a thousand feet out, which is, you know, very conservative for the type of rates that we have.
Um, and I understood that the recharging, I think is the word you used, for the wells, the eight homes on site was fine. All I know, my concern was the wells up on the hill behind, were they gonna lose water based on this, this new development, potential development, pulling water in? Was that something that you looked at, was, well, the houses up on top of the hill, are they pulling for the same aqua four as these?
So the, um, I did look at the upgrading, the uphill, um, wells, and some of them are shallow, some of them are deep, there are no wells currently drilled on the property, on the property that there's a proposed subdivision.
Right.
So I can't say, uh, if there would be any interference, because I don't know, it would be based on, um, so if you can conceptually imagine, up at the top of the hill, a well that is a hundred feet deep, and there's a two hundred foot difference in elevation where the proposed subdivision is, and anything drilled down here would not intercept anything up the hill. It would not, it's not connected.
Okay.
But if the well up at the top of the hill is five hundred feet, and the well down below is two hundred feet, there may be some inner connection. Again, we're talking about homeowner wells, which there is a huge demand, the demand is very cyclical. So, you know, people take showers in the morning, they cook at night, do a load of laundry, it, it's on and off, on and off, so it's not a continuous pumping, whereas municipal wells tend to just run for hours, you know, something like that.
That's it for now, but I reserve the break.
If I remember that's about, you know, it's tough, because we're not doing a full presentation, but one of the things, you know, we talk about in the report too, is talking about recharge, things like that, and, and how that helps, you know, bring water back into the aquifer and things like that, so those are some of the details, and, and I think that, you know, will also speak to impacts in the surrounding neighborhood, that we would add in a, in a full period of presentation.
So I'm gonna piggyback on, and I just apologize if this is, you addressed it, and this is just not my understanding, so when we look at the local well inventory map, you know, there are properties here that don't have wells identified on them that are still within, you know, your thousand foot buffer area?
Correct.
Why were those not included?
They're not available.
Just the information's not available?
Yeah, it's not available.
Got it.
So a lot of the homes that were, um, built before nineteen seventy, you know, the well driller may or may not have submitted that to the health department.
Okay.
Uh, so it's very sketchy, so, uh, so anything that's not shown, we did pretty comprehensive search, uh, for online records, um, that was, that's all the ones that we found.
Understood.
So just a really broad stroke, high level question, um, how often do you see, you know, a subdivision of this side size affect, uh, the neighboring properties?
Certainly not, uh, this is a relatively small subdivision, eight lots, or, you know, the site itself is thirty-one acres, and half of that is gonna be designated open space, so, um, it's really, I worked on developments that are, you know, over thirty houses, it's, it can get tricky, because there's a lot, a lot of draw. Eight, eight homes, it's not that much, the property size is very, is sufficient to keep providing recharge, um, without even looking outside of the watershed, without looking up, uphill, because all that water contributes to the site as well. We looked at, I looked at just the site itself, because, you know, if it can't sustain, if the property can't sustain it, then you don't have the project.
I think what the commission's concerned about is, you know, if you get your two to five gallon per minute yield, um, how, you know, without being a hydrogeology expert, you know, are we, is there any way of knowing that the aqua four that is under this particular subdivision would be the same aqua four that's serving the existing homes, or is there potentially two or three different other, uh, water supply sources?
So, the way, um, if you can picture it is, uh, up above is soil, and a lot of times if you have like a nice sand and gravel, people will put their wells in that sand and gravel, and they draw the water from there, but in this case, it's a bedrock, which is, it's a hard rock, so the only way you're getting the water is if you intercept fractures and joints, the water travels through cracks in the rock. And, you know, some fractures may go in this direction, some in that direction, so, you know, you won't really know if there's an inner connection, uh, you can get a good idea if, if you do a test on your own well, you know, you can see how much you're pulling water in, and, and you can get a good idea of what, what this well can produce, what it can, what it can sustain. Um, a lot of times, if you, if you put in a dug well, you can, you can start pumping, and within five or ten minutes, you've drawn the water down to the pump, right? This is not a good well. So in that case, maybe you try and deepen the well to get more storage, maybe hit more fractures. So to answer your question in a roundabout way, is that we, we wouldn't know, um, until we actually got the wells into the ground, we have an idea of certain homes, how deep their wells are, uh, some are, are too shallow, and I know that we wouldn't have any impact, and some, there might be, you know, the same, the same fracture, so we may be drawing water from the same fracture of them.
So, speaking to this particular, um, subdivision, um, can you speak to how the topography, being that it's on such a steep grade, in your experience would affect the yield of other people's wells? You know, being that we're on such a steep grade going down that hill, it's basically coming down a mountain, would, how would that affect the, uh, the water flow to, to other people's, um, wells?
So, water generally will flow from high to low, so in this case, the lower regions should theoretically have sufficient water, and the wells on top generally will need to hit good fractures or go deeper to get, you know, to get a lot of water. Don't forget, for health department reasons, you know, they like to see that homes have between twenty-five GPM, like gallons per minute, but you can offset things if you don't have a high yielding well, high yielding well. Um, maybe we have storage, like I said, you can deepen the well, that adds storage as well, so.
I think some of the residents that are downstream, if you will, are concerned that the new subdivision's gonna grab the water coming down.
The, oh, and, and take it up, well, the, there's, there's two components to this. One is the taking, like what each house, house has, what its demand is based on health code, so it's, you know, for this case, five hundred twenty gallons a minute, can I say that? So, but what's actually, what's actually being consumed is much less, because of a variety of things, and most importantly is that there's gonna be outside septic, which returns things to the ground. So the actual consumption is much lower than the health code demand, and so you're not gonna see. The, the homeowner wells, like I said, are very cyclical, so it's not like a continuous pumping where it's gonna draw the water table down over a period of time, um, you know, you, you, you do your laundry, whatever, and then you turn your pump off, the pump shuts off, and everything recovers, uh, and so it's not like they would be just stealing all the water, because it's only a very small area in the scheme of the watershed.
So if I'm understanding it right, the, uh, the use is disproportionate to the recommended supply?
Yeah.
That's all I have.
So I feel like I have a lot of questions for you, but I also feel like they're not supposed to be asked right now, right? We're trying to determine if this project's different versus the water study and the hydraulics we are.
You can talk about methodology.
Yeah, so I, I definitely am very curious to get more into it, so I do see that, I just wanna kinda ask, is there anything else that you would say is being added on to the project, or is it really just kind of this?
Yeah, I mean, it's really interesting.
Expert bringing stuff to the table.
Yeah, it's addressing this main concern, and, and again, it's, oh, yes, we can't get into some of it, but some of the figures you say we'll define with regards to recharging and things like that, we think are important to share, uh, uh, you know, because obviously we think it, it, it's favorable, and, and, and that's what we're looking to do, like, as far as what's new, yes, it's, it's, it's the wealth, that's our knowledge.
And again, the town attorney really kinda pointed us in the direction that, right now, we're just voting on whether or not we think the, what was the wording again, if you don't mind?
Significant amount of new.
Yeah, if this is a significantly different application to the point where it renders you to hear it again, because as a commission, there's nothing in our regulations, our regulations are silent as it relates to special exception permits, um, there's, there's some things in our regulations that like you can't hear a zone boundary change, and I can't remember exactly what, within like a certain time period. Our regulations seem to be silent on it as it relates to SCPs, so because of the silence of that, we don't prohibit you or permit you to hear or rehear something again, that is why, with the lack of guidance, I went to the town attorney, and he said, "It's really at the discretion of this commission, you don't have to hear an, an application again, if they're submitting the same thing, you can say no, but if they are submitting a substantially new application, you can hear it again with that new information, especially considering the reasons for the denial."
Yeah, and, and I would just kinda add to that point, I mean, you know, the fact that the denial, when you look at the denial, it's the, it's, it's the reason that's stated for it, and, and, you know, 'cause I, I remember that hearing, I actually listened to it recently, and, um, well, I mean, I have, can't speak for the commission, but I, I did hear comments of, um, you know, like, I think, I think I'm quoting Commissioner Westlin, right, where he said, you know, there, there was a lot of meat on the bone left on this application, the applicant had, you know, used, uh, you know, if you remember, there was a lot of open space provided, um, and the regulation were a lot more lots, so I mean, that wasn't, because that wasn't, you know, put into the reasons for denial, we just, you know, we stuck to the, the, what was put as the reason for denial, and that's the material.
Yeah, I mean, I, I recall, without getting into too much detail, it really did seem like in the almost last minute of the application, discussion of wells, like, and blasting and stuff kinda came out of nowhere.
Right.
And then we closed it, and it was like, all right, so, um, yeah, I mean, I see this as, as being, uh, more information, so.
Yeah, and, and, and to be frank, I, I had never had an application where we had had someone like, like here, and I didn't know she really existed as far as somebody out there. I mean, I feel there was somebody who had a, you know, I, I knew that there was probably somebody who had expertise in it, but I had never heard of somebody, so thankfully, we were able to find her and see what she was able to provide us, and I, I think, I think she has a lot of information to ask, a lot of the questions that were asked that we could answer at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you for giving us new information, um, in addressing the commissioner's concern and, and the neighbor's concern. So from your point of view, there is none or little adverse condition?
Uh, no, can answer that right now, later.
All right, that's getting into the, into the application at the time.
Just try, well, I'll start, I'll start.
Yeah, and I, and I'll tell you, the reasons for it is, uh, this commission cannot make a prejudgment on how you, if you do accept it tonight, how you will eventually vote, whether you think you're gonna approve it or not approve it, actually does not affect your decision on whether you think there's a substantial amount of information or not, um, so in the protection of you, to protect you from accidentally prejudging yourself, um, that's why we're trying to keep this at a secret.
No more questions?
The method of the assessment, is it all based off of just records, or is there any physical tests, like drilling cores or something like that?
Uh, it was looking at records, published records, uh, there was, like I mentioned, there was no well on the property, so, uh, I looked at the test fit data to get an idea of what the overburden material was like, I looked at the geologic maps for the area, and I looked at the well logs for the wells in the area, just to see what the drillers had, um, identified, so there was, in that respect, there was no physical testing.
Can there be?
Uh, you know, if someone, if they drill a well on their property, sure.
Besides drilling a well, there's no other test?
No.
Okay.
Up and on board.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions?
No.
Does everyone feel like they've heard enough from this, uh, person, this expert?
With reverbs to this question, yeah.
Does everyone?
This question?
Yes. Like, this is an expert? Oh, shh, do we think there's someone that might know more about this than this person? If there is more to know? Or happy with the set? Or happy with this?
I don't.
I think that's not the question.
Being presented to us, and that is.
Happy with this expert?
I don't know.
That's a question. You can ask questions.
No.
The question is, do we think this is a different change?
Not a change to the application.
Oh, my question's to you. Yes. Do you feel like this is an expert?
Yes.
Yeah. Do you feel like we could find a better expert? Someone that could tell us more?
I actually don't think that's relevant because it's the expert we have.
I think it's relevant because we wanted an expert.
Yes.
Yeah, we didn't accept.
Cancel this expert.
The people that were here at the time.
Yeah. The expert is accepted.
I think an expert's a new addition to this application. And makes it a change in an application. And potentially a different application that I would want to hear more from.
Are you ready to vote?
Yes. Will set expert be here if they come back?
Good question.
Okay.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Well, the report's already prepared, and so that would be, you know, then you have all, you know, her findings, and she'll be here to present it.
That's okay. Rather than a report, there's this question that live carried here to ask questions.
As we vote, the question, is there enough information, potential information, that you'd like to hear this application again?
Yes, the motion would be to hear resubmitted application for the cluster subdivision at 1536 and 56.
entertain a motion.
Or due to the additional information rendering the application substantially different.
We're having a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Condon, second by Lupo. Call the roll, standing on my right. Smergleo, yes.
Benetia, yes.
Condon, yes.
Arrell, yes.
Westland, yes.
Lupo, yes.
Looks like we're going to hear it again.
Do that.
Okay, thank you very much. We're going to go on to our final.
And just for clarification, we will put this on the October 2nd meeting for the public hearing. So we'll notice it all properly, but we're going to put it on the first meeting in October. That's the soonest meeting we can put it on to be able to notice the purpose. And I'm doing it because I'm still here.
Do we have another hearing?
Nope. That's the last. That's under site development and subdivision plans because it's a future subdivision application. Next is deliberations, which I don't believe we have anything to add to that agenda.
So we have meeting minutes, eight, seven, 25.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from eight, seven, 25.
Okay, I have a motion.
All seven.
At a second, is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? No? Okay, then. We have a 2026 meeting calendar.
Yes, so we are trying to get our ducks in a row a little early this year for obvious reasons. I just want to make sure it doesn't fall through the cracks. So this follows our typical first and third schedule of the month, with the exception of the month of January. January has five Thursdays in the month, the first Thursday being New Year's Day. So the potential proposition or point of discussion is potentially moving it to the second and third Thursday of that month, which is the 8th and the 22nd. There was some discussion before this meeting about potentially just canceling the first meeting and then only having a January 15th meeting. The concern is, from my perspective, is that we go then from the beginning of December to the middle of January without a meeting, but as long as everybody is fine with that.
I think we should tentatively leave it on the schedule.
As the 22nd?
I agree.
Both meetings.
If we don't need it, we can cancel it.
If it's there, because we're.
And so on. Any other abnormalities?
No, I think you guys actually somehow fell pretty easily. I feel like every other board was on some holidays, but you guys seemed to do it. This past year, we didn't have two meetings in June because of Juneteenth. Juneteenth now falls on a Friday this upcoming year, so that would assume that we're still having a meeting June 18th.
All right, I have a motion to accept the calendar. I'll move or make a motion to accept the calendar as drafted.
By Condon, second.
Second.
So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We're upon release CPA 2020-03 by 10160, 1584 Monroe Turnpike.
So this was the bond that was discussed, yep, come on up. It was discussed at the last meeting related to the zone change for the Stevenson master plan. At that time, there was a request to release the bond. This commission had requested that the bond not be released at this time due to information provided by staff related to the health of some of the trees on site, including the Amalankier. We had said that we were not going to release it at this time, and we wanted to revisit it in fall 2026. The applicant asked for the opportunity to defend that decision, and they are here tonight in order to do that.
So the issue we had was that some of the trees were struggling to survive.
Yeah, so I'm Jack Kimball for the record. I live at 262 Westport Road, Eastern Connecticut. I'm one of the owners of the property of 1585 Monroe Turnpike. So I just wanted to, I have a copy of the bond here. Just if you.
You can pass it out.
All right. I have some photos as well.
Yep.
But.
Pass them along.
Thank you. So I just see in the bond agreement, we'd like to go over, since it's been a very long time since this has passed across your desk, what kind of the terms are here? And. The goal of the bond is to ensure that we get proper soil erosion and sediment control. And the plantings are a part of that. But what I highlighted there was that it's a relatively small part. It's $2,500 of the $22,000 total bond amount. And we had planted according to the plan. And we believe that we've covered the soil erosion and sediment controlling aspect of the bond. And we've planted about $55,000 worth of the plants here to try to really beautify the property as well. And we, we understand that some of them have had some issues with the transplant. But we did have water on site, hoses running, moisture meters, checking the moisture content of the soil for each of the trees. Additionally, I wanted to mention that we have a one-year warranty with the installer of the plants. So that in the event that any of them don't make it through the transplant, they will be replaced accordingly. And, yeah, I think that.
So what we saw report.
So it sounds like what you're requesting is a, are you requesting a partial bond release? Or are you requesting the full bond release?
We would like to request the full bond release. We feel like we've met the conditions for the soil and sediment erosion control that are specified in the bond release, sorry, in the bond. And.
I just want to be clear on the asking. I just want to be clear on the asking.
So, yeah, we feel like we've gone above and beyond, and we really want to make the site as beautiful as possible ourselves. We still operate a business there. So it's that.
What we saw report.
Actually, our well enforcement officer is here. Do you mind speaking?
No, no.
He had done the site inspection, and the reason he had done the site inspection is if you could just give a little resume of what you do, just based on your experience background.
In the wetland enforcement officer, background, degree in landscape architecture, and a business owner, plant nursery owner for 30 years. Well, working in the industry for 30 years, let me clarify. I went out to do a site inspection, and the plantings were substantially correct. Little, some changes in some of the planting beds and the location of planting beds, and some of the plants weren't exactly right, but they were, they were close enough. But some of the trees along the road, which are, you know, street trees, there were two varieties, one were dogwoods and one were Amalankiers. An Amalankier is a native wetland tree. From the looks of the trees, the Amalankiers were certainly ailing. It could have been that they had dried out once and dropped leaves. That's not unusual. When plants get dry, their natural defense is to drop leaves. The trees may be just fine come spring, but without, without waiting until spring, you can't really tell. So the dogwoods were in much better condition, but I would expect that because there's this kind of a flowering tree than the Amalanker. There was irrigation on the trees when I went to inspect. So they may be perfectly fine come spring, but it's a waiting game to find out.
Okay, thank you.
You have a couple of options. You could either, based on new information, including the one-year guarantee, release the bond. You could do a partial bond release. That's a potential option because we do agree that the sediment and erosion control measures, like the silt fence hay, topsoil seed, fertilizer, grading, things like that, have all been complete. I leave it at your discretion.
It seems like a $2,500 bond for the land, so we could do a 90% bond release, or we could bite the bullet and do 100%.
I leave it at your discretion.
It's an opinion of the commissioners.
How many trees are we talking about?
Even answer?
Five?
I didn't. I don't, I don't recall often. I'm going to say the Amalankier trees. You're probably talking about between six and eight trees. Between six and 10 trees.
The applicant said he thinks it's five, too, so let's say.
Could be seven.
Okay, so between six and eight.
Not getting too deep into this, but if the soil was, was, you know, had the moisture content, why did they die?
It could have been that they just dried out. They might have arrived at the site. They could have dried out at the nursery.
Right.
And then three weeks later, three weeks later, they dropped their leaves.
Yeah, I got you.
So.
So they're not dead? Oh, they are.
Not necessarily, not necessarily. They took a hit, and they may very well recover. They may very well not recover.
It's too early to tell.
Well, you have a warrant.
It's too early to tell. You won't be able to tell until spring. I did scratch into the bark, and there is signs of green underneath the layer of bark, which indicates that there's still life in those trees. But again, if that, if it dropped leaves three weeks before I was out there to look at it, it would still have that pith underneath the bark. So it's really just too early to tell. It's a waiting game if they're going to be viable trees or not.
I'm good with releasing it.
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
All right, is that a motion?
Yeah, we'll make a motion to release the bond.
A full amount, in the amount $22,000.
Yeah. Full amount and the amount of $22,000.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Well, yeah, I mean, we could withhold the 2,500. It doesn't make sense. It's only six trees. So let's take a vote, starting on my left.
I don't know. I'm kind of torn. I don't know about doing the full bond. But so when's the warranty up on the trees for a year? I'm sorry if I missed that.
The warranty needs to be up next July.
And is that enough time to know if the trees are going to come back?
Yes, if they, if the buds break in the spring.
I think the question is, is who's going to?
Who's going to manage for that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's my question. Thank you.
We'll be monitoring because we, we work there, our office is at 1585 Monroe Turnpike. And we are permitted to having a nice.
Yeah, no.
They paid for the trees, and it's.
Yeah.
I might as well try to get there.
With no reason for them to.
Get the right trees, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, yeah.
If a few trees die, you're going to replace them, right?
Yes, we'll replace them.
Okay.
I would say.
The same thing.
Yeah.
Well, we're voting now, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, this is discussion under the motion. Allowed, which is. Probably should be.
Discussion between us, but maybe, you know, take a look at those lights, maybe, guys. Just check your lights. But besides that, yeah.
We can talk about that as a separate issue.
Yeah, no, I'd be okay with issuing the bond.
I understand it. The warranty on the tree makes sense.
All right.
I agree. I'm good.
All right, then we'll call the roll, starting on my left.
Lupo, yes.
Westland, yes.
Arrell, yes.
Condon, yes.
Benetia, yes.
Smergleo, yes.
We released the bond.
I'm excited.
He's allowed, right?
Still nice to know your opinion.
Wait.
But you're not going to be there.
Yeah.
All right, so we're moving on. We have 485 Pepper Street. But it doesn't look like they're here.
But they are online, so.
Online, great.
Let me promote everybody to a panelist. That should allow you all to unmute yourselves. I will start to do a quick review of where we're at from the last meeting. We received a verbal complaint during public participation at the last meeting related to 485 Pepper Street, which is the location of a special exception permit that was permitted by this commission that was to develop a construction yard. It was for two properties that were existing single-family residences located industrial zone. The proposed SCP allowed it to be turned into a construction yard. One of the houses was to be converted to an office. The other house is to be removed. And they were setting up material bins as well as building a building to crush inside of the property. The complaint that we heard was really addressing three different issues, the first being them operating outside of the hours of construction that is permitted in town, two being dust associated with them crushing on sites, and three, just the literal crushing on site. So they were issued a cease and correct order on August 13th, 2025. At that time, we notified them that staff would be coming out the following Tuesday, August, that we would be coming out the next week, which we did. The applicant, the applicants, a representative, all met us on site. It was with myself, Thomas Noonan, our zoning enforcement officer, and Laurel Shaw, our director of health, in order to address some of these concerns. We had some of these discussions, and they were told that they had to be at the September 4th meeting to answer any questions and talk about next steps with this commission. And that's where we are tonight. So I'm not going to summarize our conversations. I'd like to, since you guys have been hearing from everybody else, I'd like to give the applicant.
Joe, have?
Yes, so I see Joe and Kevin, and then I see Chris and Ralph. Joe, am I promoting Chris and Ralph to panelists, too?
Please.
I think I tried to promote Ralph, and he didn't accept it yet. So I'm going to try to redo it again.
They may just be listening, you know, if they don't, if they don't accept, that's fine.
Okay, great. So I'm going to give you guys the floor to talk, and then I can chime in afterwards about staff's understanding of where we're at, potential next steps.
Sure. Well, good evening, Joe Grasso for 45 Pepper Street. I apologize, I couldn't be there in person. I had a prior conflict. But we are here to respond to the cease and corrective action at the 45 Pepper Street location. So I understand there was complaints of dust and working outside of construction hours, crushing operation, what have you. We, you know, we have since ceased, and we're here tonight. The dust complaints may be residual dust from the site itself. may be residual dust from the site itself. Wind, what have you. We do have thirty sprinkler heads on the property that cycle starting at seven AM in the morning until five PM at night. They cycle the property continuously. And that's as of recently. So there, that should have, that should resolve the dust issue going forward. As far as working outside the hours of allowed hours, we discussed that at our meeting on site. That will be corrected, has been corrected and should not be an issue going forward. It was clarified. We, there must have been a miscommunication, a misunderstanding of what the working hours are. They have been clarified. And we, and we will be staying within those hours going forward. As far as the crushing operation, you know, we we still have residual material from the Pepper Street project that we've been working diligently to discard since the project has been completed. We still have quite a bit of material to export and part of the, part of doing that is processing material to make it usable for an export. We have, I think at one point we had an almost forty thousand, forty thousand yards of material that came off of Pepper Street itself for the benefit of the project. And we, we believe that more than half of that material has been, has been removed. We have reduced the size, the height of the pile substantially. Since the cease and corrective action has been sent us, but we still have a ways to go. And in order to complete our project there and through a certificate of occupancy, we would need to remove all that material, which means it would need to be processed. So we're hoping that, you know, we're hoping that we can continue to operate as we have been in order to do so, to complete this project. You know, I'm sure it's before your time. We had an agreement with Scott Chatslin to utilize our location as a staging area for the benefit of the Pepper Street project. You know, in lieu, in lieu of using town property in restoration, what have you. And part of that was the storage of exported material that, you know, that came directly from the road, the, all the cut material directly in front of our property and all the way down to farther down the road, up and out to twenty-five. So that is still an issue. We are working diligently to remove the material, but it needs to be processed to do so.
So Mr. Grasso, if we allow you to crush material on the site, that specific twenty thousand yards, how long would that take to remove?
Well, that, that's, you know, that's the, the issue we're having. It's not, if I could, if I could have it removed instantaneously, we would. It gets processed and you know, and discarded or sold or utilized in other projects as needed. And, you know, we're it's hard to, it's hard to give you a timeframe, but you know, it's it's not quick. However, we are, you know, to give you an update on the progress of the project, we have recently met with our structural engineer, solely our civil engineer, to try to progress this project to completion and, and get the certificate of occupancy sooner than later, you know, before the five-year term to, and hopefully that this is, it's a non-issue despite the fact that we have the residual, you know, material. The, the, the rest of the site, the bins, the, I would say ninety percent of the storm drainage, the retention ponds are in. And, you know, we, we have some demolition to do in the, in the, in the back corner. We have a retention pond to do in the front, but we are, I would say the site itself is, is, you know, seventy-five percent complete. And now we're, we're working towards the final stages, which would be erection, you know, erection of the building. And in order to do that, we need to have the crushing operation in its proper location. You know, for a proper layout and which, you know, which currently the the way the site plan shows the building, it may need to be moved, moved to the, moved farther to the left on the property for, for purposes of, of workflow. What have you. And, and in order to do that, we do need more of that material moved and off the site to, to properly lay the building out. Which we're, we're, we're making that happen. But, you know, to give you a definitive time, it's, it's very hard to say. It has taken us, it has taken us two years to remove half of that pile. We don't anticipate that for the rest of the pile, but it does take time.
Okay, so what's the proposition then, Kathleen? Will it have them come back for a modification?
Yeah, so there is nothing in our records that shows that they can crush on site in any capacity. So the special exception permit allows them to crush on site after the building is up and running, but not during construction. That I can see, I don't, I believe that's most of the commissioner's recollection from remembering that application.
And most of us, I think all of us were here at that time, so.
Yeah. And then as it relates to using the site as a staging area, I again cannot speak to that because there's nothing in writing, but even if a staging area was there, we have nothing in writing that says that as part of that staging area, they are permitted to crush as part of that. So if this commission is willing to entertain allowing them to crush, they would have to come in for a modification to the special exception permit. I do want to make it clear that that means it's tied to the special exception permit, which means they have the rest of the five-year period of which they can crush. It's not like we can limit it to the next.
How much is left on that five years?
Two and a half years. It's from twenty twenty-two, so I think.
Half over.
I think it's, I think it's about half over. So I think they have around two and a half years left on that permit. Again, it's a special exception permit. You could put certain conditions on it, such as they have to show progress for the piles. That can include anything as minimal as just taking pictures in the same location during certain time periods, to a full extent of having them do surveyed flyovers where, you know, they have to have somebody do a volumetric account. Not necessarily they have to show you a map every time, but they have to have a licensed engineer or surveyor give you the volumetric of that pile to ensure that it's going down, you know, in a, in a timely manner. The other option is, is you don't grant them the ability to crush with the understanding that according to the applicant, it's just going to take them a lot longer. If not be extraordinarily difficult to, to move that pile.
Is there a reason you piled where the building was supposed to go?
Well, the, the material is actually in the stockpile area. However, it's, it's you, the entire stockpile area is utilized. And we had to move the drainage to where the, where the proposed building was. Now we're, now we have to, now we have to shift the building and shift the layout because we weren't able to use, to install the, the detention system as originally proposed. Because the material was in the way that that was our only option. My, my fear is if we don't remove this material within a, you know, a, a, a short period of time, that, you know, this, this project is going to go beyond five years. We, we don't want that. We, you know, we want it. We want it finished and completed before five years. And so this, you know, this, this has been a problem. You know, during the entire building phase of this, of this project and, you know, having the ability to to process the material has helped us, you know, move, make this material reusable and move it faster. You know, but we, we want, we want to get the crusher building installed and, and put this project, you know, bring it to a completion.
Well, why can't the material be moved without crushing it?
Large rocks, large, you know, it's, it's, it's not usable. It's not sized. It's, you know, it's thirty inch, thirty inch in size, thirty inch minus, and we need to process it to four inch minus.
But it was moved there, correct?
Well, we, it was live loaded from the road and disposed of right on site.
You have a question?
Has any modifications come in, Kathleen, to, for anything that they've done with changing drains and moving things? Have we had any of that come through?
For this permit, no. However, do I have had some preliminary conversations? You guys might change the location of the building slightly, correct?
That's correct.
So there is a potential additional amendment that may be coming in in the future.
I have a question. If you are going to crush on site, you have the facility to keep the dust watering, to keep the dust down?
Yeah, yes, sir. So the site has thirty sprinkler heads. There is water suppression, dust suppression on the machines themselves. We, despite all the dust suppression apparatus on, you know, installed on the site, it wasn't being utilized as it should have been. It is now. I have enforced that, that the sprinklers are on a rotating pattern from seven AM to five PM, so that the site is always wet. And that if, if we were to crush, that there's water hooked up to each one of the machines in the hopper, on the discharge belts. You know, anywhere, anywhere that there's any loose material to keep the, the dust wet and, and on the ground.
And would you limit the crushing after nine and not past four o'clock?
Absolutely. If there, yes. Well, yeah, we, we, we usually wrap up around three regardless.
As far as the special exception permit, you could constrain the hours even more. Right now, grading, processing, things like that is eight to five, Monday through Friday. They can't do weekends, but you could constrain it more. You did for Garter Street. You did for one, Garter Street's ten to three.
So I'm sorry, Ben, is it, why were they operating outside of hours previously?
I, I believe the, that we weren't clear. I mean, we had, we had a copy of the special notes, a special permit, but my staff was not clear on the, you know, on the timing and we are now.
What hours were you operating before you were clear?
Seven, seven to three and occasionally Saturdays.
All right. So our last meeting, I had left and actually drove past your property and there was activity that night after nine o'clock, it seemed like. I mean, I didn't hear crushing, but it seemed like there was a lot of lights and, and it seemed like I didn't go on the property because that would have been trespassing, but just driving by, it seemed very active at nine PM. What would that have been?
Active at nine PM? Well, there is, we, we do have a house there that somebody is utilizing now. I don't, I don't, they're not, we're not, they're, by no means is there any operations going after.
It seemed like, I don't know if you have like a large, like a tall piece of equipment, but it seemed like lights were on, on the top of that equipment.
I don't, I don't know what that is. There, there shouldn't be anything going on in past, you know, four o'clock there. We don't allow nighttime, we don't allow nighttime operation.
More question. What do you foresee the length of the crush? A couple of months and six months? What do you think?
To, to process the pile? To process and remove that. I mean, it's taken us two years to remove half of the pile. I, I would say at least a year.
Okay, thank you. So the question to us is, do we have them come back? And will we allow them to crush, to get rid of that pile specifically?
You don't allow them to come back for a modification and they're just not permitted?
Year it out.
Get it out.
The next two and a half years. That's true, but we also have to put our foot down at some point. You know what I mean? Like it can't just go on forever because we, you know, we've been looking at it that way. And I'm not saying to stop them at this point, but at, certainly it cannot go past the next two and a half years.
And we've tried at this property to discuss them with these issues and they've been ignored. So I'm not fully confident that they are going to continue to.
If you had, can you do it in a year?
Can I, can we remove the, the material in a year? I don't want to commit to that. We can certainly, you know, give it our, our best shot. You know, I, I want to reiterate that we are moving quickly and diligently to get the project to a completion before the five years. You know, we're, we're hoping that this winter we can start the erection of the building. You know, once the building is up, there's really not much more that, you know, we have some, some drainage detention system in the front of the property and then, you know, it's plantings. That's about it. But what's going to hinder us is if this pile is still in our way and I can't reduce the pile. I can't get the, I can't get the crushing operation properly laid out. So I'm kind of working, you know, I'm working the, we're working the pile as we, you know, progress the project on the property. So if, if we're not able to continue to crush and reduce and remove the material that was directly a benefit to the town, to, you know, in that road project, it's going to hinder my ability to finish doing the project on site.
How many yards? Can you tell us how many yards?
We think it's about twenty thousand yards. That's, you know, twenty plus or minus, that's there.
I have one other concern I'd like to bring up. When you, when you guys came in for the original permit, we had an agreement that the dump trucks coming in and out were to go to and from Pepper, Pepper Street to twenty-five and not cut through Monroe. And I've witnessed probably hundreds of your trucks coming down Jackie Hollow Road, which isn't permitted anyway. What do you say to that?
Well, we, you know, we do have rental trucks that, that take material out of there, you know, the, the, the processed material that's there. And we do, and, you know, we do reiterate the the regulation of using twenty-five as an exit. You know, we, we do our best to, to, you know, uphold that, you know, that regulation and, and we will. If I have to put, you know, somebody directing traffic at the end of the driveway to make sure that that happens, we will do that.
I believe there would be signs put in, Dom. There would be signs that said trucks, traffic left only or something.
Yeah. That's, that's a great, that's, we would do that regardless. We can have that done immediately.
I mean, the, the roads are being teared up. You're disturbing the neighbors. Your people are trying to walk their dogs and there's and they're speeding, by the way, because it's supposed to be twenty-five miles an hour. They're going thirty-five, forty, hit their air brakes. Dogs are going crazy. It's, it's a nightmare.
Sure.
When were the sprinkler heads actually turned on, Joe, and actually functioning like they were supposed to be?
Well, we installed the sprinkler system, you know, we installed half of the sprinkler system when died three years ago before we, we coupled the two properties and when we we, four sixty-seven was in the last year. Now it's one property, so. we, four sixty-seven was in the last year, now it's one property, so now in the last month. Uh, our sense, you know, since we got the cease and and corrective action, they are on full um rotating schedule from seven AM to five PM.
I have driven by, I have seen them on.
That was my next question, okay.
And they were in the past. Also, we saw the way they partially operated while we were onsite for their site visit. So I haven't seen them like all of them on in their glory, but they do have a pretty extensive water mitigation system for dust suppression.
Because the week before that, when I drove by, there were street sweepers going, dust everywhere.
They openly admitted at at the meeting, as they are tonight, that they were not utilizing it as they should have been.
I guess my concern too is, you know, we had, we had agreement back then that all this monitoring was going to be done and we are assured all these things were going to happen, and it seems like a lot of things were missed or forgotten or misunderstood. What assurances do we have that that's going to change going forward?
Well, um, you know, when during the construction process, um, I have, you know, reiterated the the regulations to my staff. Um, and, you know, uh, for the lack of a better phrase, it's fallen, it's fallen on deaf ears. Uh, we have had some staff uh let, you know, we we've let some staff go, um, we've replaced some staff. Um, I have a great uh yard uh manager there, plant manager now. Um, he's been there for the last year. Uh, he understands what needs to be done. He understands the regulations. Um, he, you know, he does his best to enforce um what is needed uh with the staff that's there. Um, and if we do have any staff that is disobedient, um, you know, they'll they'll be, you know, we'll work through that. Um, but, you know, it's unfortunately taken uh taken to this point with a cease and and corrective action for for, you know, for them to understand the severity of the of the regulation and to abide by it. Um, but I can assure that that we will uh and the operation will be following the rules. Um, to, you know, to make sure that, you know, we're we're, you know, keeping dust down and and working within hours and being a good resident, uh, and, you know, and 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 keeping, you know, keeping the 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 local residents at, you know, happy with with what's going on there.
All right. Any other questions? So.
They need some direction. I don't think you have.
Should we have them come in for with the?
Yeah, I don't think you have to vote on that, but I think you should take a roll call to make sure that they understand the risk management of if they come.
So if they come in with a modification that states they will crush on the property, they will only crush that pile and they will give us reports, say, every three months, maybe a photograph of the height of the pile diminishing?
Every month.
Every month?
I'm not joking either.
Leon's going to be here, so.
I don't, I agree. He's got more than at least once a month.
All right. If we do that, shall uh we go with that?
What happens?
They have to come in for a formal.
They have to come in for a formal application, which would be a public application.
Yeah, it would be a public.
Which the public will come and speak to, I'm sure, so.
All right. So that sounds like plan.
Well, what would be the the consequence if they they don't follow?
They get another cease and assist.
It's all we can do.
Right. So are you okay with that, Mr. Grasshaw?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We we appreciate it.
And let's do it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you for coming in.
Okay. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, let's move on. We have correspondence? None. Uh, I don't have a report. Do we have any commissioner reports?
I was wondering, what's what's up with five seventy-one Pepper Street? The, is that where they're supposed to build that office building? They tore it out a house?
Yes. So they, my understanding is they have their permit for demo for the house. I believe they've worked out an agreement with our fire department that they're going to use it for a training opportunity. I don't know if that has happened yet.
Okay.
Uh, demo permits take a long time. You got to put a sign up. It's got to be over for there for thirty days. It's like quite, it's quite.
The house is gone now.
Is it? Yeah, it's quite a process. So I know they came in for that, you know, a month and a half ago, two months ago, so I think, you know, that's finished. We gave them the permit for that. I do believe they still need to come in for the full ZCC. Um, they had a couple outstanding um conditions for me of items that they were willing to do, but we were letting them demo the house since it didn't have site disturbance associated with it. Um, I think they came in the other day. They had a couple um things for the town engineer. They did submit that. Um, so they're very, very close to get their certificate of zoning compliance so that they can start the rest of the project.
That's where that like was like offices with a warehouse or something like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Question on fifty-nine Main Street. I see some activity. Are they moving on now?
Fifty-nine and Main Street?
Yeah.
Vega Place.
With the Vega Place?
Oh, um, actually, the activity that you see is actually a violation. They have snowplows on site. They have um storage of materials that they claim are associated with the house that they're going to build next door that I have no records for. Um, so they currently, Thomas can speak obviously more to this than I am, but Thomas has issued them um another violation um associated with the storage of vehicles and snowplows and things like that. Their big hangup with me is that they built a portion of the deck not in compliance with the approved set of plans and they located it in the building setback. So they came in literally a year and a half ago and we told them, eh, you have two options. You can either try to go get a variance for it or you can take it out, you know, and do that. And so, uh, we've been getting the runaround from them from a really long time about um what their next steps are. I do know that they uh built part of it in the public right of way with the state. They had to rectify it with the state, which they have verbally told us they have, but I don't have any actual like physical information for. They did get a variance for one side, but the other, that that they're out of compliance with the other side. So at the moment, they can't continue construction because they also have issues with the building department on top of all of that, which I can't speak to because it's not my department. Um, but they can't move forward right now until they rectify, till they either get a variance or they remove what they have done for like a deck and a ramp on one side of the property.
Dumping asphalt. They must be removing asphalt to some, to the road on the back.
Yeah, they're storing materials that they're not supposed to be storing there, that's not associated with the project. They're storing siding there associated with, they told a resident about the house next door. So yes, right now Thomas is working through the home violation process. I don't know off the top of my head if he's moved to the citation process yet, but it's it's a, it's one of his favorites of the month.
Maybe it's time the state look at putting a roundabout there. Maybe it's time the state look at putting a roundabout there, because last time they did a roundabout, they took some of the neighboring property, so.
Sure.
No, sorry.
Hmm. Let me add, John, four seventy-four Pepper Street?
Yeah, remember?
Four seventy-four Pepper Street. Is there anything going on with that property, that roundabout there?
I lose half his property.
What's four seventy?
It's to, um, it's landscaping business on Pepper Street next to a little bit down from the property we were just discussing. All right. Then, um, do you have any, and do staff reports?
No, it's, we've been, just that we've been very busy. Um, we haven't been very busy, though. We've been, um, dealing with a lot of violations. We have been progressing what we feel is appropriate to the citation process. Um, right now, um, eight forty-six, um, Main Street, the Road Runner, they had last year cut down a bunch of trees without a certificate of zoning compliance. They got a cease and assist from me. They came in and talked to us about um what they needed in order to complete the certificate of zoning compliance. Um, they made great progress at the end of last year. They came in for a pre-construction meeting. Um, they submitted the bond. They did more additional information and then they kind of fell off, it fell off. So, um, they got issued a letter of voluntary compliance. They got issued a letter of violation and our next step is to issue a letter of citation unless for some reason this commissioner feels like it shouldn't go to that level, but I've been emailing them and sending them certified mail and I've gotten no response from them, so um, my personal opinion is that's going to be the next step um that we're going to go to. Uh, we've had, um, six oh four Main Street, the automobile repair shop just went into a citation hearing um with a citation um hearing officer. Um, so she just recently heard that. Um, so that's continuing to progress to try to make sure that that um is in compliance. They continue just to fall in and out of compliance. Um, so they're good for a little bit and then all of a sudden we'll see a huge commercial vehicle there for, you know, a long period of times. Thomas is being extraordinarily diligent um on that property because he knows how important that is to the community. Um, and uh we've just been dealing with a a lot of uh neighbors' complaints recently. Um, trees falling down, trying to figure out who's on that property. Um, we've had a lot of um people complying with their conditions of approval. One twenty-six Main Street came in with their endorsed set of drawings. Two Victoria came in with their endorsed set of drawings. They've already had a pre-construction meeting with town. They are highly motivated to go, so I think we're going to see that daycare facility in construction sooner rather than later. Um, so just a lot of people are are moving and and doing things, so no formal report because to be honest, we've been we've been a little crazy the last couple of weeks, but in a good way. We're getting things moving.
Then we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Ball is in favor? Nine forty-three. Thank you, everyone.